And I don't think it would hurt to say some of it here, so that they know that it's coming from what their concerns are. And then they can use that, negotiate a contract, and then we can get that on. The thing is, is like, they always send it to their attorneys, too, and their attorneys to... But if we did that and set something up relatively soon, I think we could still get it on December 15th agenda.
Good evening. I call to order the regular city council meeting for this Monday, December 1st. Would ask if you would please silence your cellphones, if you have them. And we'll start the meeting off with item one, the roll call.
Bless 'em.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Hayes. Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Sammerson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item three is the mayor's report. I just have two quick items first, and then we'll get into the presentation. I had contact from the chairman of the Ward County Commission, looking to set up a joint city council, Ward County Commission meeting. We were working towards getting that set up for this month. However, there were some scheduling issues that they weren't able to work around, and so the intention would be to make that meeting happen in early January, as soon as the schedule can be worked out. And then I would also remind council that there are some ADP reminders popping up regarding review, year-end review things that should be given your attention. Now, I'd like to note that the Association of Defense Communities gives an award naming great defense communities for their military support. And this year, with an application spearheaded by the Minot Area Chamber EDC, Minot was given the Greater Defense Community Award. And so with that, they created a video, which we're gonna play now. So if you can direct your attention to the screens.
We're on our way to the North Dakota State Fair downtown Minot, North Dakota. Over 300,000 people walked through that gate during the state fair. It's just one of the great things that happens in this town. Let's check out some of the other things that are happening.
Seventy years ago, the community raised funds to purchase land and then contacted the Air Force and said, "We would like an installation here." And that's how the relationship started.
That, of course, became Minot Air Force Base. Today, it has two missions.
The job here at Minot, both for the 91st and the 5th Bomb Wing, it's hard. 365, 24/7. We have to be ready at a moment's notice to provide whatever combat capability. And not only that, we do it with nuclear weapons.
I think one kind of element that people may not fully understand is exactly what the nuclear triad is.
The triad has simply been the backbone of American strategic deterrence for decades. The reason why it's special and a little bit more salient here is because we have two legs: the intercontinental ballistic missiles and the B-52 bombers.
And that's unique, right? You're the only base that does that.
That's absolutely unique. That's why this base is so important. Now, the third leg is the submarines.
Folks in Minot joke that they could have all three legs of the nuclear triad if somebody could just get a submarine into Lake Tsukakawea. But it was a tragic moment with a different body of water almost 15 years ago that brought the community and military together in a new way: a 100-year flooding event of the Suez River.
A number of our airmen live in town, so they're dealing with flooding effects. There were very few transportation corridors available. In fact, there were only two that were available across this river. And basically, all the commuter traffic in the area was using those two.
To make sure it didn't happen again, the community built a state-of-the-art flood wall. It was funded through a grant from the DOD Defense Community Infrastructure Program, or DCSIP.
Natural disasters like floods affect both the community and the installation, and we've gotta put our heads together on solutions to solve these problems for both of us. And we've very effectively been able to do that here.
Down the street is another DCSIP project: a children's museum that includes exhibits on military history.
You get a lot of military families coming here.
Yes, we do. They're one of our biggest visitors. We give them a military discount. We just appreciate all they do for our community.
They're gonna remember that the B-52, that is a staple of what the airmen at the Minot Air Force Base do, to protect us all every single day. Exposing our kids to that and, you know, having that amenity in the community is just such a big deal.
Business owners are also creating spaces for the community and military families to share. I'm at the entrepreneur behind a new downtown public space called Citizens Alley.
This is a cool place you got here. This is kind of a new concept for Minot.
We are just about complete, but we've opened it up to the public in the meantime. On a night like tonight, people can just come on down and play some yard games, have concessions, and hang out outside.
The downtown area, it seems to be coming back alive. You know, this is where people are starting to go. Was that kind of the plan and thought behind, "How can we connect this and bring in the airmen"?
Oh, certainly. Yes, they're for sure an important target audience for activities that we can plan in downtown. This is essentially their community living room.
We can do little things, support airmen, support families. We will step up in a big way to do so. What I love about this community, too, is nobody wants the credit. They just wanna do it because it's the right reasons.
An airman was very passionate about wanting to send the first-term airmen home. They raised some money that first year. They sent home four. The community wanted to be a part of this, embraced the program, and last year, we sent 138 airmen home.
Four to 138. I'd say that's a community that wants to be involved.
That's a community that wants to be involved.
That got to go home for the holidays last year for Christmas, and it was honestly like such a blessing. Hadn't been able to see family since then, so it was a very emotional time.
The service members, the airmen, they love it. They get out, they retire, and where do they move? They stay right in line.
It really just has diversified our community, and it makes our hearts warm when we know an airmen has chosen to make Minot their home.
Back in the 1950s, the local community said, "We want to be part of the Air Force mission," and donated the land we're standing on right now. That's how we started, and it has continued every day since.
For an airmen to be successful at work, in their particular job, they've gotta be successful at home. And Minot is their home. Having a place to go eat, having some groceries, having a secure and safe environment, and a community to go and do things, Minot fights very hard to make that happen for us. And they don't have to, but they do.
Well, now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce a couple of the stars of that video. Our two wing commanders from Minot Air Force Base, Colonel Jesse Lamoran and Colonel Jimmy Schleba. So, Jesse.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. The real stars of that video are the city and the folks here that have helped us be successful. We spoke at the Christmas tree lighting a couple nights ago, and I told a quick vignette that during the Revolutionary War, General Washington could not do what he did if it weren't for the support of the communities that our army lived off of, as we went through the East Coast. And that kind of support and that dedication to ensuring our military success and the civil-military relations continues to this day. So, good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Family, friends, Minot neighbors, it is my greatest, my greatest honor to serve as the 5th Bomb Wing Commander at Minot Air Force Base. And it is an absolute privilege to get an opportunity to speak to you guys and to this community. Minot Air Force Base is often referred to as the most strategic base in Global Strike Command, if not, the entire Department of War. It is, in fact, the only base with two legs of the nuclear triad, which makes it incredibly important. If there was any base across the United States that our enemies should take note of, it is this base right here. It houses both legs of the nuclear triad: the B-52 and the Minuteman III intercontinental ballistic missile, and your airmen. The airmen that live and breathe in this town remain ready and on alert at this very moment, continuing to deter our adversaries and always ready, if necessary, to deliver a disciplined, a deadly, and a decisive response anywhere, anytime. On the 5th Bomb Wing side, your warbirds defend, maintain, load, operate, and fly the B-52 Strato Fortress. We are the air leg of the nuclear triad. While the first B-52s entered service about 70 years ago, our professional airmen dedicate their expertise to keeping those incredible aircraft operating safely and reliably. When you enter Minot Air Force Base, a sign outside the gate says, "Home of the Global Striker." And above our security checkpoint, a sign reminds visitors, as it has done for decades, that only the best come north. And they are better as they go forth because of the efforts of this town. I have seen that mantra ring true among our airmen repeatedly since I took command. And I know that when our City of Minot neighbors drive north to visit the base, that you are only the best neighbors that we've ever had and the most supportive and best defense community in America. So, thank you for that. While our B-52s routinely dot the sky, anyone driving by Minot Air Force Base since last October may have noticed a new addition to the skyline: a great white dome covering a running track and a turf sports field affectionately referred to as "The Bubble." Thanks to the extensive efforts of our community and this team, our airmen and families have a fitness and recreational refuge during the colder months. Units and teams build camaraderie on the field, while families, strollers, and airmen completing their fitness assessments lap the sheltered track. Quality of life improvements, such as The Bubble, not only enhance our mental and social well-being, they ensure that we are fit and ready to fight for the multitude of mission sets that come our way. These infrastructure investments keep Team Minot ready and mission-focused. Today, Team Minot consists of approximately 12,000 service members, civilians, and family members. In the fiscal year for 2025, the overall economic impact of the base to the community was more than $650 million. But that number hardly captures the impact that both the base and the surrounding communities have on one another. Recently, Minot Air Force Base airmen executed a rigorous nuclear surety inspection. This is the Super Bowl and the World Cup of nuclear weapons stewardship and nuclear combat readiness. It is what puts fear in the heart of our adversaries and enables trust in the American people that your airmen, just eight to nine miles down the road, are keeping steward and watch over our nation's most dangerous weapons. I am humbled, and I am proud to report that they passed with the best results seen in years, ensuring that the American people can trust that the most powerful weapons ever designed are in good hands. And your airmen continue to ensure that this strategic capability remains safe, remains secure, and is always reliable. From there, the team quickly prepared for another overseas tasking to strengthen deterrence in the European theater: the members of the 69th Expeditionary Bomb Squadron integrated with allies and partners in Europe during a bomber task force, demonstrating the Air Force's commitment to enhancing regional security and global power projection. The 5th Bomb Wing warbirds demonstrated their excellence and competency in October during the United States Strategic Command's Global Thunder exercise. This tested our ability to maintain a safe, secure, effective, and ready strategic deterrent force by sustaining simulated, enhanced alert operations for more than a week. In addition, we hosted 1,100 visitors showing this amazing city and the airmen that thrive in the northern tier. My deepest gratitude on behalf of the 5th Bomb Wing goes to the entire Minot community for their exceptional support of our airmen and their families. I see it every day. It just brings warmth to my heart. The impact of your contributions is felt throughout the installation and throughout the city, from morale-boosting events like military appreciation at the park and the North Dakota State Fair, to vital programs like the Minot State University-sponsored events, the Chamber EDC's Prairie Warrior Auction, and Operation Homebound, and the gift of sending over 100-plus airmen home for the holidays. The creation of the Minot Airport Welcome Center and the on-base Driver Motor Vehicle Office further demonstrate your dedication to our airmen and their families. We are incredibly grateful for the numerous military appreciation events and sponsorships year-round. Thank you to all the local businesses that offer discounts to airmen and families, and to those that generously contributed to the food drive during the recent furlough. Lastly, to Task Force 21 and all the civic leaders, your commitment sets the standard for community engagement across the Department of the Air Force and War. Your passion and care for our airmen are unmatched, and we all benefit immensely from your efforts. So, ladies and gentlemen, your airmen at Minot remain ready. They are disciplined. They are dedicated, and when necessary, they can be deadly. The strategic mission you entrust us in remains safe, secure, and reliable. The 5th Bomb Wing won more than 83 Team and Higher Headquarters Awards in 2025 so far, demonstrating their commitment to the mission, professionalism, and dedication to excellence. Thanks to you and your continued support, our airmen and families continue to thrive in their workspaces and at home, and it takes both to be successful. Thank you so much from the airmen of the 5th Bomb Wing and Minot Air Force Base. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, friends, and neighbors, thank you for inviting us here tonight to talk to you about our inspiring airmen and their incredible families. As a commander of the 91st Missile Wing, I'm humbled every day to serve alongside our Rough Riders, and I'm so proud I get to do so with the fervent support of this community and the surrounding towns as well. Minot Air Force Base is home of one of three ICBM missile wings in the U.S. Air Force. Our complex stretches over 8,500 square miles, which is roughly about 12% of the state of North Dakota and about the same size as the state of Connecticut. In total, we have 15 missile alert facilities and 150 launch facilities, 16 of which are located within the Fort Berthold Reservation borders. Our missiles and our airmen have remained on alert continuously, 24/7, 365, since the early 1960s. Throughout this past year, your Rough Rider airmen have validated the credibility of our deterrent. Last year, I was joined by civic leaders to witness a Minuteman III missile launch at Vandenberg Space Force Base, the missile of which came from here at Minot, from a site down near Velva, which validated the readiness of our stockpile. I look forward to doing so again in this coming year. And while I'm proud that these airmen perhaps make all this look easy, which they do because they are so good, rest assured, it is only because of their consistent maintenance, constant mission planning, and careful watch in any weather and at all hours. And to echo Colonel Lamoran's comments about our recently completed nuclear surety inspection, the strategic mission you entrust to your airmen remains safe, secure, and reliable in our missile fields as well. We were recently honored by commander of U.S. Stratcom by being presented the Omaha Trophy, which is presented to the best ICBM wing in the United States Strategic Command. We strive to reduce, while we do this and accomplish our mission, we strive to reduce any inconvenient impact while we traverse and work through the missile field in your community and through the very streets with our big white trucks, as we like to say a lot of times. But we absolutely appreciate all the support as we continue to receive when we are out and about. While we continue to maintain alert, we also continue to modernize. In the near future, the MH-139 Grey Wolf helicopter will replace the aging UH-1 Huey to conduct convoy escort and emergency security operations in the missile field. Construction on the new helicopter facilities on base continues steadily. And of course, the Sentinel ICBM program will modernize and replace the Minuteman III ICBM weapon system and 400 operationally deployed missiles and 450 launch facilities, updating current ICBM capabilities and sustainability. Recently, we stood up Detachment 12 of the Site Activation Task Force this summer at Minot Air Force Base. This detachment is tasked with overseeing the All Things Sentinel until the project is completed. In August, we held our first community town hall on the Sentinel program here in Minot at Minot State. And Air Force Global Strike Command commented that it was the largest attendance of any of their previous town halls in other communities. The community's presence there is a testament to your continued interest, stake, and commitment to our mission. Our Rough Rider airmen are at the controls and on alert as I speak. Unlike the 5th Bomb Wing airmen who deploy around the world, our missileers remain employed in place. They continuously enable combat power with the Minuteman III, or, as President Theodore Roosevelt might have called it, "The Big Stick." When you drive past a launch facility or missile alert facility, you may not see much happening other than a truck parked outside, but rest assured, our airmen are there performing crucial maintenance in record time and in all-weather conditions. Last month, during Global Thunder 26, our teams of airmen demonstrated their ability to build a Minuteman III and bring a launch facility to full operational capability in less than a day. This is a gargantuan task that typically takes about a week. Operation Bully Stick showcased our airmen's ability to surge when needed and keep our strategic deterrent in the fight. The airmen at Minot can focus on their mission and advance their skill sets only because of your advocacy and backing. Colonel Lamoran and I often hear the goal is to make North Dakota the most military-friendly state in the country. Well, as far as we're concerned, we both believe it already is. And I congratulate the city of Minot on being the distinguished great American defense community that it is. I'd wager, though, that Minot is, in fact, the greatest American defense community. The community here advocated and helped pass state legislation earlier this year that included the psychologist compact, counseling compact, virtual employment, community funding around installations, and family childcare license exemption, allowing military spouses to be licensed in North Dakota using their DOD childcare certification. Additionally, the state tax exemption for all military members, military pay, hunting and fishing licenses, privileges for out-of-state residents, and support for our veteran community, just to name a few. And speaking of state residents, I'm happy to say I'm no longer an out-of-state resident. Earlier this year, I made it official, and I became a North Dakota state resident, and very little else has made me more proud than my ability to say, "I'm a citizen of North Dakota and a fellow Minotian." Ladies and gentlemen, your Rough Riders remain ready, your missiles remain secure, and America's "Big Stick" remains reliable and on alert. It is the honor of my life to command and serve at Minot Air Force Base, North Dakota. Your commitment to our mission and the shared community is felt at Team Minot every single day. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and bully!
Well, thank you, Colonel Lamoran, Colonel Schleba. We appreciate your words and are so happy that you're here, sharing our community with us and doing the great work that you are. I know that Colonel Lamoran told me, we met out in the hallway, that he's gotta fly tomorrow. So, he's gonna have to book out. And he said, "Oh, Colonel Schleba is my ride, so I guess he's gonna have to go." So, gentlemen, again, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you're doing and for being with us, and be safe. Thank you. All right. We will move on to Section 4 reports, City Manager's Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager's Report, as norm is attached to your agenda packet. Stand by for any questions. With no questions, First District Health would like to make a short presentation if Amy Silverwood is here. Amy?
Good evening, Mayor Janser, members of the city council. I have to follow these guys, so I'm a little bit nervous now, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amy Silverwood Miranda. I work with the First District Health Unit in the Health Promotions Team. I'm here to talk today about our community health assessment and how residents across our seven counties, including Ward and Minot, can help shape the future of our communities. Our community health assessment is the foundation of our public health work in our counties we serve. It provides a clear picture of the health, strengths, and challenges of our community. Our assessment guides priorities and resource allocation, including funding, to help us invest in programs and services that truly meet community needs. To be able to do this, community input is essential because decisions based on real experiences are more effective and equitable. Therefore, we are conducting a survey, and I know a lot of surveys have been conducted recently, and we are conducting a survey that covers a wide range of topics affecting health and well-being, including but not limited to mental and physical health, housing stability and homelessness, food, security and access, economic stability, childcare, and overall quality of life. We encourage anyone aged 14 and older to complete the survey, and multiple members of the same household are encouraged to participate. The more input we receive, the better we can understand our community needs. The survey is quick, confidential, and accessible to all residents. There is a QR code on the flyer that is in the board packet, and then I've also got some flyers to put by the door as well. The survey can also be found on our website at fdhu.org, and paper copies can also be collected from our office. We are also offering an incentive, so participants can enter a drawing to win four of $25 gift cards as a thank you for sharing their time and their insight with us. Why participation matters? The voices of our residents shape the future of our community. Results from the survey can help us prioritize programs and allocate our resources effectively. The more residents who participate, the more accurate and representative our community health assessment will be, ensuring our community's needs are considered. We encourage everyone to take a few minutes to complete the survey and make their voice heard. Thank you for supporting this important effort to improve health and well-being across our region. Questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, indeed. City Manager, anything further?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll move on. Item 4.2, City Attorney's Report. City Attorney.
Mayor, members of council, I've submitted a written report. I can stand by for any questions. The most pertinent part I'd like to share is that we do have some staffing updates that are found in paragraph six of the report. We're gonna be losing one of our assistant attorneys, Corbin Dickerson, has accepted another opportunity. So, he's had a couple years with our office. He's become a part of our City of Minot family, and he's gonna be a huge loss for the organization. So, we wish him well on his future endeavors. We're gonna start recruitment for that position immediately. And we also have a legal assistant who has welcomed a new family member to her family, and she'll be out for most of the month of December. So, we're gonna be... So, we're going to be short-staffed in the City Attorney's Office here for the next couple of months, but we still stand by for any questions that you have and welcome anyone stopping by.
Any questions for the City Attorney? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, City Attorney. Number five is the Report of the Planning Commission. We could perhaps take a motion to accept the Report of the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next section is the consent items. There are a number of them, 22, and I have been asked to pull number 6.16 and 6.19. Are there any other items that should be pulled for individual discussion? If not, the balance will be passed on one motion. Anybody in the audience here to discuss any of the items in consent? Seeing, oh, yes, sir?
I do say, I see.
Okay, this, okay, is that? Okay, so that's an action item, sir, and that will be discussed when it comes up in the agenda individually. Okay. Okay. Any other item, any other items in this, in Section 6 to be pulled? All right, if not, Council, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the other items as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the consent items except those that are pulled. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will move to item 6.16. This is the Capital Improvement Plan Ranking Criteria and Evaluation Policy. Council, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I've asked Lance to come and just give us an overview of the process they went through to develop the plan and make sure we're all on board.
City Engineer.
Appropriate time for a bad civil engineer, Joe? No?
Hear him all day long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Just a quick overview here, really, we developed this plan to address some of the comments that we received last year during our capital improvement plan process. For many years, each department has used their own internal ranking criteria when going through and developing their projects, which works well for them. However, the problem comes when we send a bunch of number-one-rated projects up to the City Council. It's, it's hard unless you're working in infrastructure all day long to really maybe understand where projects should rank in relation to each other. And so, really, what this policy does is it provides a uniform framework for all city departments to work off of, so that, you know, my projects aren't competing necessarily against flood control or utilities project or something like that. They're all ranked on a uniform criteria. And so, what we've done is, is we've put together some criteria that we feel are important and assigned a weight to them. Obviously, those things can change. This is a policy document that, that you as the council will adopt, but it was our best effort to try to put some numbers and some logic to, to how we rank these projects. So, I'll just run through that real quick. Health and safety, regulatory compliance, we ranked this the highest. Everything that we do as, you know, engineers and, and department heads that put together projects, it all comes back to, to public safety. We want to make sure that all of our citizens are safe, that our infrastructure is safe, and so this category for us was, was the highest. Asset and condition and maintenance needs, so our priority here is to try to replace infrastructure that's costing us a lot of money. So, if we're continually having to go and fix breaks or potholes or those sort of things, we want to rank those projects with a higher priority so that we take that bad asset off our list and replace it with something that's more reasonable. Community and economic development, impact, and these are quality life type of projects, but in addition can also be projects that support economic development. Maybe it's extending a water and sewer line to a new industrial development. It could be upgrading a road to handle more traffic because of our anticipated growth in an area of the city. So, it's, it's pretty wide in how we evaluate those projects, but really what we're trying to get at is, is we want to make sure that this infrastructure brings value to the city. Strategic and policy alignment, hopefully this one is pretty self-explanatory. If council's given us direction or approved a plan that has been submitted, we want to make sure that projects that we're recommending are in alignment with those plans. Funding implementation and feasibility, this really comes back to can we afford to do the project? Are there other resources external that we can bring into the city to help lower our costs? Those are projects that should be considered. And last, public stakeholder support. So, while this score is low, I just wanted to point out that most of our projects that we submit in capital improvement plans have had some sort of public input, or they're in a study or something already. So, it's, this category is weighted lower, but a lot of that public support is found in different categories already. Just a quick note on the process, it's similar to how we did it before. Each department's going to submit a project worksheet that has all the data in it, but instead of that, that department scoring the project, a committee filled with members from across city staff will evaluate that project. The, each category is ranked on a 0 to 10 scale and then multiplied by its weight, and that project will fall into one of three tiers. Tier one projects, 80 and above, are projects that staff feels are the most important for council to consider and fund. Tier two projects are projects that are important but may not have the right timelines or funding availability yet, so they'll take probably a backseat to some of the projects that are in a little higher tier. Tier three projects are projects with a score of less than 60. These projects might be important, but might need development time yet, they might not have funding, or they might be a project where if we had the money, it'd be great to spend it on, but other priorities might jump ahead of this, so it's ranked a little bit lower. After these projects are scored, they're going to be reviewed by the city manager in consultation with the finance director in case we have to adjust priorities based on community constraints or emergencies. And then finally, these will all be presented to you, and I would envision a similar format to what we had before, where we had a workshop where we can work through these. Perhaps we can shorten that up some and look at projects that are in that top tier or maybe the second tier, and then ask questions on projects that are in the, in the final tier. We can work through that, but I think the, the goal is to make sure that you're still involved and, and have a seat at the table and can ask questions and get a good handle on these projects as they're presented. And then finally, we'll, we'll present the CIP to the citizens and the council, have public hearing on it like we always do, and then eventually start working those projects into the budget. Section 6 is just some supporting tools and documents that we used when we're evaluating projects. Seven is roles and responsibilities, which I kind of laid out here, and then last is our annual review process that we'll have. So, you know, we want to make sure that this process is working, so if there's things that as the committee is ranking projects that we should adjust, or as council you'd like to see us do a little bit differently, like we did here this last year, that's our opportunity to make those adjustments and then proceed with, with the following year's CIP. And then finally, just graphically, this is what our, our project worksheets will look like. We did make just a couple of adjustments. Here's what the scoring would look like on that sheet where it's replaced. It used to be the individual department scoring criteria, now it's the committees. And then we shorten up the, the amount of questions that we're asking on the, on the project. There's a lot of redundancies, and we're trying to lessen the workload a little bit on, on what goes into these worksheets while also still offering value to answering these questions. So, hopefully that was a good, quick rundown. Be happy to have, take any questions or feedback on this, and then once this document's approved, then city staff will start building next year's CIP.
Any questions for the City Engineer? Okay, thanks for your presentation, Lance.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Alderman, Blessam.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Lance, I appreciate it. No questions, I'm good. Part of this was I wanted to make sure that we got a good overview of it from Lance, because I think this is really important stuff. We're, we're talking about really where some of the biggest infrastructure projects and huge amounts of money flow through our processes at the city and the budgets. And so, thanks to Lance and the team for putting that together. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd, I'd like to make an amendment and an adjustment to some of the weightings, if I could, and again, this is, this is for discussion. It's, it's my perspective as always, and if there's agreement, that's fine. If, if not, I think, I don't think we're far off where we're at today. But what I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, if I could, is that we decrease the community and economic impact percentage from 20 to 10, and to use those 10 points to increase asset condition and funding and implementation feasibility from 15 to 20 and 20 to 25. So, using those five to go up. And if I continue, oh, that's, that's the motion, Mr. Mayor. I'll hold up there.
Do I second?
I'll second.
If I can continue, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I, I think one of the things, and Lance maybe put my mind at ease a little bit more in looking at the community and economic impact pieces, because there are some places where I can understand that. So, I think having that as part of the list is important. I think making good decisions about how we deal with infrastructure as we're building, or especially around the edges of the city, can be very important. And so, it is important to have that as part of our discussion, part of our thought process, but in my opinion, 20 is strong. I think, I think putting that much weight on those pieces, when really, public safety at, at number one, I think we would all agree on that. Asset condition and the funding feasibility are the next two big pieces for me, so I would just like to see those a little bit stronger in the, in the calculations and to hold back on community and economic impact.
Further discussion?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Yep. So, what we would do is decrease community and economic impact from 20 to 10. We would increase asset condition and maintenance from 20 to 25, so that's the first half, and then increase funding and implementation feasibility from 15 to 20. So, we would use up those 10 on those other two categories.
Okay, further, no further discussion, so we're voting on an amendment to the original motion. And everybody understand what the amendment is? All right, I guess we're ready to call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pitner?
No.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries with the consensus from Olson and Pitner.
Okay, now we're back on the original full motion. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us to item 6.19. This is a budget amendment to cover remaining Nas and REM and OEM costs. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the recommendation. I see Jason is here. You have some comments for us?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, yeah, again, I, I think we need to approve the item as is. I've gotten that clarified, but I just want to take the opportunity here for beyond Nas and kind of where we sit. I know as we, as we, we looked at 25 as when the first water might flow, right? And so, we're towards the end of the year, just wanted to get an update, Jason, if we could.
Sure. Alderman, Janser, rest of the council, yeah, I was, I was maybe a little over-optimistic when I, when I announced July of 2025. Things were heading in the right direction. Since then, there've been some project delays. Probably the biggest one, there's a, a set of filters down in Max at the biota treatment plant. That, that plant was really pretty close to substantial completion to be ready by July. There were some underdrains for filters that the engineer deemed to be defective in their installation, and there ended up being some disagreement between the engineer, the contractor, and the State Water Commission. In the end, the State Water Commission decided to hire a third independent engineer, so they had to assemble their team, they had to come in and do an evaluation. That report is now done, so it is deemed to be a defective item that the supplier has to remove and replace. A couple of weeks ago during a meeting, they, they gave us a lead time of about 38 weeks, which puts us, by the time the stuff is manufactured, delivered, puts us into late next year. The state has since pushed back on them, and we're, we're pushing them to have everything done so that we can pump water by July, mid or mid next, next year sometime. So, with that, Snake Creek Pump Station should be substantially complete and ready to pump water probably early part of next year, and then there's really just one more project that we can receive water before that project is done, so that one won't delay us getting water. So, I apologize for, for being antsy, but I'm, I'm as excited to get Nas water as everybody else, so, but it's looking, looking like probably mid next year.
Okay, any questions for Jason? All right, seeing none, any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes Section 6. We're now moving on to action items in Section 7. And item 7.1 is a fire department budget amendment from materials and supplies to structural maintenance. This is to replace some doors, actually. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Alderman, Blessam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the city manager, this one, or the chief, if she's here, Adam, this one, it feels a little like we, we ought to have maybe had a budget item for this. I mean, we're, we're 25 years into these doors, just, the good news is, from last meeting where I was meeting where I was asking, hey, let's use current budgeted in dollars, that's a good thing, we're inside budgeted dollars. But this one really does feel like we ought to have seen it coming. And so is that, is it, did something out of the ordinary happen, I guess is the first question?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless them, I'll let Chief Kelly get into the details. But, but as I understand it, I mean, it is something that we knew was coming. I mean, she'd been planning on the, the two doors, but, you know, four doors, two doors in 2025, two doors in 26 originally. But it, like we do at the House sometimes, other budget concerns come up and it just kind of get pushed to the right, and we got to a point that it had to be done. So that's my perspective, but chief, any more detail?
Mayor, Councilman, bless them, that's exactly what happened. We identified it, half of it was in the budget to replace two doors, and then we were going to kind of push it to the end and then get, in 26, we were going to budget for the two other ones. Those got eliminated, the ones for 26 had to be pushed off. But what we did at the beginning of the, the year, we started pushing that because of other expenses. We had some huge expenses at two of the stations for HVAC issues that were significantly more than we thought. So we ended up pushing and pushing and, and so here we are. And we had some, some money in the budget at the end of the year here, and so we really liked, we got a great price. We'd really like to move forward with the, getting these replaced.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bless them?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Motion carries.
That takes us to 7.3, since 7.2 was pulled from the agenda tonight. 7.3 is a, is a request from the Minot Housing Authority for a facade improvement forgivable loan in the amount of $105,000 for facade improvements at 108 East Burdick. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Olson, seconded by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion? Alderman, bless them.
Thank you. If I could, those, those that have the history, was it, was it contemplated that a pseudo-government entity would apply for facade funds and move a project forward? As I, as I looked at, at Sentry Code to understand the entity type, and as I looked at the program, I guess I came to the conclusion that it doesn't seem to preclude it. So maybe that's where we are, but boy, it seems funny.
Alderman, bless them, if I may, being kind of long in the tooth here, I, I don't, I don't recall ever anything that would indicate that it wasn't available to such an entity. You know, I think most, most everything I've seen is, you know, it's the owner of the building. So inasmuch as the housing authority owns that property, appears to me that they're eligible. But I don't know if our city attorney has anything else beyond that?
Yes, Mayor Janser, Alderman, bless them. As far as I can recall on the spot, I know there's a lot of discussion that typically centers around increasing the taxable value of the property, and a lot of times, some of these pseudo-entities aren't paying a tax on it, but it does still increase the value of the property. So if they should ever divest themselves of it, there would be an increase that you'd, would be actualized that way. It also, I mean, one other benefit of the facade improvement program is that it increases the overall aesthetics of the community, and so that would be actualized as well through it. But I'm not aware of any law that's, recludes their eligibility for it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can continue, so to the city attorney, would it, could Minot Public come and have us fix up Central Middle School? With, with sales tax dollars?
Alderman, bless them, so there is a component of the facade improvement program that contemplates returning it back to its historical state, and so I don't know how much of that would have to be actualized through their application for it. So I mean, I, I don't know if our community and economic development director has contemplated that type of circumstance.
Good evening, Mayor Janser, members of the council. To clarify how the program was set up, in 2021, when we developed the program guidelines, we talked about a boundary for the, for the, for the area to be eligible for these program funds. We originally had contemplated setting up the program where we could like pick the, the streets and neighborhoods that would be eligible. The previous city attorney advised us the best way to do this without any controversy, where we're not just cherry picking properties, was just to make all the properties in the central business district eligible for these property, for, for this program. This is not the first property that was, that's not privately owned per se, like by a business. We also had an application by Mouse River Players about three years ago that came through. They, they were eligible for the, for the funds as well. They're not a, they're, they're, I believe like a 501(c)(3) or something like that, so they're, they're nonprofit as well.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, Brian, I think I'm good unless there's other questions for you.
I do have a question for Brian, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is, is this property on the tax roll?
I do not know. Maybe the city assessor might know, but I, I'm not sure. I know the, the applicant is here tonight, he could probably answer that.
And here comes our assessor, so.
Mayor Janser, Alderman Olson, a portion of the property is leased out, so that portion of the property is not exempt from taxation.
Yeah.
Alderman, bless them.
If I can continue, I, this is a very strange one. I mean, there, I, I understand the nonprofit side, I think I can, I can kind of get my mind there, but here we're talking about a government entity that has its own sources of funding through public funds that are coming in, whether it's through the federal government, through their funding mechanisms, or other, other, other pieces that come through the state. You know, as, as Alderman Samuelson pointed out last meeting, there is a portion in our rules or in our, our oversight for this program where we decide yea or nay for any reason, it says. Again, I, I don't, I don't doubt the need, I, I, you know, for what it's worth, I think the buildings downtown look nice that have been done. I don't think that's ever been a question. I just question whether this makes sense for a government agency. You know, could the county bring the courthouse? It's in the central business district, there's nothing in the program that precludes it. I don't see why they couldn't. And so I, I guess, for that reason, my vote will be no tonight. I, I don't, I, I just don't see it with this one. I've, I've been willing to move along with the ones that are in the, in the process and go ahead with what's set up, but this one's strange to me.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond?
Certainly, go ahead.
There are properties in downtown Minot that are not zoned central business district, like City Hall, I believe the courthouse and other properties, and probably the, the school, they're zoned public and they're not eligible. So if the property's zoned public, they're not eligible for this program, only central business district properties are eligible.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Alderman, bless them.
So a question, if I could, maybe for the, for the assessor or for you, Brian, is there any reason why a government-owned property like this one wouldn't be public?
Yeah, it's, Mayor Janser, Alderman bless them, it was set up as central business district back in the day when the zoning map was adopted. It hasn't come to us for a rezone in, in the past several years. I, I can't speak to actions of the city council in the past, but it, it's been zoned central business district for a long time.
Do you happen to know are, are other properties that are owned by the housing authority zoned public?
I don't know. I'd have to check into that. It's, it's simple, all I have to do is check the zoning map on the JIS system, and it'll show the properties are zoned central business district and public. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Understood. Alderman Fuller?
Thank you. And I don't, I don't have any questions for you, Brian, thank you. I, I guess for my colleagues and kind of to Alderman Blessam's point, so we have a, a pseudo-government entity that's basically taxpayer-funded already through one way or another, whether it be state, federal, local, and now we're going to ask the taxpayers to go ahead and refurbish their building for them on top of that. I, I have a fundamental problem with it. Number one, when I look at the map on the city's website, and I, I realize now that there's two different maps. There's the, the central business district map and the facade program map, and this doesn't fall under the facade program map, it doesn't fall within that map. Now, it does fall under the central business district, but I guess my first question would be, why do we have two different maps? But I, I, again, I, I can't, I can't understand why a government entity or government-type entity would need the taxpayers to fix their building up for them. I mean, if they need that, they have that request, they can request those, those funds through the federal government, the state government, or anybody else. I know we have the program in place, but I, I wouldn't vote for this one either, I'll be honest.
Further discussion? Alderman Samuelson?
Thank you. So it, it's brought up as far as the applicant. And in the facade program guidelines, it says the applicant must be the owner of the Minot Housing Authority as being a public agent, how are they an applicant as owner of the building? I will, I, I can't support this any, I don't support the facade program anyway. One thing that I want to bring up, and this is in the program guidelines, and this is under the program purpose. The city of Minot is undertaking a facade improvement program to provide public funds as an incentive to encourage private investment for exterior facade improvement properties. I don't see the private investment. Later on in there, it says the pro, the program goals, promote private redevelopment and investment in downtown properties. I don't see the private investment. Everything in through these guidelines, it talks about private investment. There's no private investment here. This is a government agency. I don't see how this is proper at all, and I will tell you in the map, Minot Central Campus is out of that map, but the County Courthouse is in that map as central business district. So are some churches, so are some Trinity properties. And I, I took issue a little bit with, because there are, there's, there's two maps. There's a map under the facade improvement where the applications are, the questions, the guidelines, there's a map, and it does not match the central business district. I take that as that was the map when the facade improvement program began. But with the facade improvement program, we've never kept to the guidelines. So I, I'll, I won't vote for this motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, just one thing to add to that, as, as Alderman Samuelson just spoke to, looking at the map quickly in the parcel viewer, the, the Minot Public Schools admin building and parking lot are central business district. Central Campus itself is P for public. The both Ward County main buildings, the courthouse and the new office building are both central business district. So I, I don't see anything in the guidelines whatsoever that would stop those three properties from coming forward and asking us for these same funds if we approve this instead of precedent, that we're headed that direction. I can, I can deal with nonprofits, I think all that can make sense, but when you're talking about government entities, as, as Alderman Samuelson spoke to, they've got other mechanisms here, and it's not private investment. That should, that should kill the projects right there.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Olson?
If there is someone from Minot Housing Authority that would like to speak, maybe we could get answers to a few of these questions.
Mayor Janser, members of the council, I'm Tom Alexander, Executive Director of the Minot Housing Authority. I can kind of help explain where our funding comes from. We are a quasi-government agency, but we're not a federal employee, we're not a state employee, we're not an employee of the city of Minot. Our board is appointed by you, the city council, we're independently run. They appoint an executive director, hire an executive director, myself. Our federal funds come from three different entities. One is our Housing Choice Voucher Program, which we provide housing assistance to individuals that qualify for that, and we receive an admin fee for running that program. We also have a federal grant for our public housing entity, and we also collect the rents from our public housing, does that. And then we have 26 buildings, 27 including our office, that we are, receive funds through our capital fund program through the federal government, and that's done on a formula, and that's, public housing agencies are billions and billions of dollars and, underfunded in order to maintain, that's part of our, I would say, our repositioning efforts in order to sell 40 of our scattered site units that we have, is to upgrade our current entities. And we also have other housing authorities that we manage from Williston. So we just combined our Housing Choice Voucher Program for Montreal County and McKinney Pearson, Pearson to Minot to reduce the admin burden for our staff. And we also run multi-family project for Montreal County Housing Authority, and we do the overall management for the Williston Housing Authority. And we also manage Henry Towers here in Minot. We also manage Morgan Apartments as a, as a part of our portfolio per se, that is, is not state or federal funded, it's just private managed, and we are in partnership with Beyond Shelter, a nonprofit developer from Fargo, where we have, currently have 275 tax credit units in the community, two of which are senior units, or receive management fees and maintenance things through that to generate our, our income. So that's where our funding comes from.
Alderman Olson?
Thank you. So, Mr. Alexander, would any of those funds be available to improve the, the outside of your building, the facade of your building? And, and would there be some kind of private financial way to be able to do this?
We can utilize, Mayor Janser, Councilman Olson, as a part of that, the bid that was awarded for 140,000, or 35,000 will be covered by our capital funds program.
And those are private funds or public funds?
Those are from federal government for, for a building.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Alexander? Thank you, sir. Further discussion by the council? Alderman Olson?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be honest, when I saw this, I was a little perplexed by it too, because it's different than the applications that have come before us in the past. I would argue differently than, than some of my colleagues, when we have been awarding these funds to businesses, businesses are in control of the income that they have, and if their income is not where it needs to be, they might raise prices on, on the, the goods or services that they're selling. Minot Housing Authority doesn't have that option. So in my mind, this is almost a better place to, to allow these funds to be spent. Again, it is, it's different than what we've done in the past, but I can wrap my head around how we could do this, because I think it is a benefit to our community.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Bless them?
No.
Yes. Fuller?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Samuelson?
No.
Motion fails with the consensus of Bless them, Fuller, and Samuelson.
All right, moving on. Item 7.4, this is the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Program, MI4, Maple Diversion, the city cost share for street improvement at the intersection of Sixth Street and Second Avenue Southwest. What are your wishes? of Sixth Street and Second Avenue Southwest. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the recommendation. Discussion by the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you. To the traffic engineer, Stefan. This one puts me in a tough spot. As we've talked about, I, I like the roundabouts, and I think we need to get more of them going so people get used to them. And I, I actually, I drive this four or five times a day. So I think, you know, over time, this is going to be a really good one. The tough part is just there's a price tag attached. Is there, so I guess maybe part of the question gets into how flood design work works and all the stuff that goes with it. But at its core, this is an add-on to the 65% solution, and so we've got to foot the bill for the difference. And that's, I think it was 272,000, something like that. Is that, is that the right assessment?
I'm going to phone a friend, but that's my understanding. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, the guys in back are nodding as well. Yeah, no. And, and I guess just to continue with it, Stefan, this, to me, it is the right solution there. The only thing I did have a question on actually with the design of it is, there's, we're not, we're not contemplating anything to the east of this intersection. Is that correct? Long-term, that's just open field. There'll be no traffic going that direction.
That, that is correct. Directly east of this intersection is both flood wall and, and dike. So, we physically cannot build a road to the east.
Right, okay. So, so with that, in the current, the current design contemplated a stop sign on Second and a through road on, I think it's Sixth there, right?
That's correct.
Yep. And so it's a through road there, stop sign on Second. So the left turns, because the, the question that I always had with that design, when we were back looking at that, was the left turns out of there, out of Second seem tough, because the flood wall's going to have to come up relatively close, so we don't have huge gates going across, right? And so the roundabout actually solves most of that.
It, it'll definitely help with that. One thing I will say with the, with the stop sign, you will be able to see, we'll have that out of the site triangle. But one change we are making with, just keep, one thing to keep in mind for the Sixth and Second, you know, currently Second Avenue is just a right turn, just a right turn to go south. With the new configuration, with moving, shifting Second Avenue north, left turns will be able to take place at that intersection. So, we're anticipating an increase in volume on Second Avenue. The roundabout will be able to absorb that increased volume easier.
So if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, just one last question, Stefan, what, so where does, where does all that additional cost come from? I mean, I, I realize it's bigger, so there's more concrete, but how do we, how do we end up spending 270,000 more than the base design?
It's a combination of, of several factors. Some of it's revised pavement markings, street lighting needs to be revised, really expanded versus just traditional intersection. And then there's more concrete curb. You really have the outside, but you have the inside curb as well, stamped concrete, and improvements that go into the middle of the roundabout too. And really, the roundabout, roundabout versus a, a T-intersection, it's, it's a bigger footprint for an intersection, so there's a little more concrete, kind of make that loop around.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. I'm going to approach this from a little different angle than Mike, because I live right behind the one that's in town already. I guess a couple of questions I have, and I don't know if Lance or Stefan or who, but do we allow truck traffic through these? Because if, if I understand this correctly, this is going to be a smaller roundabout than the one we have in up by 31st and 13th. Is that correct? Or is it roughly the same size?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fuller, it'd be roughly the same size. The, the one actually in, in the neighborhood that, that we live in is probably a little bit small for an optimal design.
Yeah, okay. Well, and then that's kind of where I'm going at. So we've had, between me and my neighbor, a number of issues where people come around that thing, they use it like a slingshot around the moon to get back to earth. And they've gone through his fence twice, my fence one and a half times. I'd like, and then the other week, when I was talking to you, you know, we had truck traffic. So are truck traffic allowed to go through these roundabouts like that? Are our city streets and roads, I mean, I'm, I'm sure their weight requirements are okay, but I mean, is that what we want?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fuller, yes, they are designed for trucks. That's that, that truck apron, that's the stamped and colored in the middle, that's specifically designed for, for trucks, so that their, their back axles are on something solid as they make that wide curve around, around the roundabout. Generally speaking, our roads, especially in our tierials like this one, would be, are designed for truck traffic. In the springtime, when the roads get soft, some, some of our local roads and other roads get restricted. We don't want to see those heavy trucks, you know, pounding that pavement. But for the most part, our, our tierials are, are going to handle that no problem.
Okay. Well, and I, I appreciate that, because the reason I ask is like, I watched truck after truck after truck when they were working on the DOT thing on Broadway there. We're coming, they were coming off of the highway, onto 13th, through the roundabout, down 31st to get back onto there, so they could just, instead of having to turn around and go down. And I mean, that roundabout is small, and in this area down there, it's an even smaller area. And so I, I guess I just have some, some concerns about how big these roundabouts are, because I mean, roundabouts, at least from what I've been able to discern, weren't designed for residential traffic. They're designed for bigger traffic around industrial and manufacturing areas and stuff like that, for semis and cars to be able to get in and out. So I know we're using them to a little different degree here, and that's perfectly fine. But I, you know, I'm not sure that that small area right down there is a good place for a roundabout, having, you know, I mean, Mike, you said you drive it four or five times a day. I, I mean, if you think it'll be easier down there with a roundabout than anything else, I, I would have you come over and watch the one by mine in Lance's house for a couple days and, and see how that works. I mean, if you want to pay attention to, some people get on there, and they use them, they record videos as they drive around and around and around and around them, you know, doing the Christmas Vacation, hey kids, there's Big Ben, you know. And so, I mean, people use them as play toys, and we've talked about that before too. So I don't know, I just, I, I, I don't know if roundabouts are the right thing. This is one of the, the where, the areas where I, I struggle, is, is this actually the best idea for us? So.
Mayor and council, one, one point that I wanted to bring up in addition to what Stefan had, I think it's important on this to look long-term, right? So, so we are going to install concrete pavement on this roadway, and when we design those pavements, our goal is at least 30 years. And so when we design these improvements, it's, it's not that we're looking, what is the, you know, traffic volume or the incidents that we could have in the next five to 10 years, it's 30 years plus out. What we don't want to do is, is come 20 years from now and say, wow, that, that intersection really ramped up in traffic volume because of city growth or, or just changing traffic patterns, and now we need a different improvement. But now we're stuck because we invested so much money already. This is likely one of those intersections that it's important in the community, you have two minor tierials meeting. It's probably not going to get the volume needed for traffic signals someday. But as the city would continue to grow and traffic volumes grow, those, those turning movements coming from Second onto Sixth Street are going to have more delays. So that's why staff is recommending a roundabout here to help future-proof that intersection for the foreseeable future. We think it's a good investment. And those funds could come from sales tax, they could come from street improvements, they can come from a lot of different places about three years from now. But I think as the designers are getting their, their plans finished, we need to know that from council, whether we want to spend those additional funds. And that's, so it's an opportunity for you to consider.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you. And, and so Lance, one of the things that I, you know, I guess maybe I put in more specific time on roundabouts and trying to understand what's going on. I, I understand what Alderman Fuller's talking about. I, I think right now, we've got a very novel situation in southeast Minot. This is the first roundabout many, many of our drivers have ever seen. If, you know, if they grew up driving here, that's where they're at. I also am a little sympathetic to the idea that I, I don't want to get to where what I experienced in Billings, which is there literally every hundred yards, right? And, and, you know, you're going through strip mall areas, and it's, oh, go around that one, and then go around the next one. And so I feel like if we make good decisions about where we put the next few, and I, and I've talked to you, I've talked to Stefan about that, I think we've got a great opportunity to educate people better and set ourselves up for a better situation for sure than $600,000 lights. And that's my hope with all this, is that we start moving towards this, get people used to it, so they're not as novel. And I think, for me, this is a good spot. It, it gives me heartburn with the money. But, you know, if, if, if it's the right solution, and, and we can make it happen, and it's a good long-term, maybe more cost-neutral long-term, that's probably a good thing. Is that a decent assessment of where we're at?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Blessam, I would say yes. We are not in the business of putting roundabouts, just to put in a roundabout. They are important tools for the right situation. And in this situation, where you have two minor tour roadways coming together, that's a great solution for them. A local road and a local road, generally not, especially with our traffic volumes that we deal with in Minot. So we want to try to focus those roundabouts on strategic locations, and we feel this is one of them.
Any further questions for Lance? Alderman Pittner?
I got no questions. Oh, maybe I give you a question for Lance. Lance, 13th and 31st, has there been any comparison of data, maybe for Stefan, you know, accidents before and after the installation of those, that, that roundabout? They've gone down. Stefan, you're telling me they've gone down? Okay. So again, and that, that would be my reason. Again, one with Mike, if you're going to do it, now's the time to do it, right? When we're tearing up the road and, and making those improvements. So, so, and, and studies have shown that, that roundabouts are just statistically safer than four-way, three-way intersections. So again, I, I'll, I'll vote to approve the item. I think it's a, I think it's a good forward-thinking move. And again, yeah, since it's never fun to have to, you know, replace, replace or in, in, in invest these funds, but now's the time to do it. While we're torn up, no different than doing a project at, at, at your house. The longer you wait, the more expensive it's going to become. So I'll, I'll vote to approve this.
Thank you, Lance. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yeah.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That takes us to item 7.5, the North Dakota Building Code Adoption. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the approval of the building code adoption. Discussion by the council. Alderman Blessam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, and maybe for the city manager, as we, as we adopt this, I remember some discussions about, you know, they kind of get into the, the approvals processes and get into how we work with contractors. Is this a new opportunity to align ourselves more closely to state law and what the state, or I guess the better way to put it, what the state governing boards have adopted? And stick with that, because I believe we've got layers right now on top of that that are brought in by the city. And I guess my question was, is this the right time or an opportunity to leave ourselves more aligned to the state requirements?
Gage, thanks for coming forward. Appreciate it.
Alderman Blessam, members of the council, yes, this is a good opportunity to align with the state codes.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could continue, thanks for that, Gage. So what, what will that, what will that look like? Are we, are we able to sort of pull back from any of our local additional layers? And, and I think a lot of that came during the flood, right? There were things where we were being very careful, because we had all kinds of new contractors coming in. I guess, this is one of the things that we've heard, is that Minot can be more difficult because we have these additional layers that don't align, they're, they're in addition to the state board requirements.
Alderman Blessam, members of council, I, you know, to me, this aligns also with the, the development committee, Mayor Janser, that, you know, that we're putting together. It all kind of comes together, right? So it does, it, it's a great opportunity to look at all these layers, make sure they're congruent. If we are putting additional requirements on something, we specifically know why. And the why is what's right for 2025 and the foreseeable out years, and what, not necessarily what was right 10 or 15 years ago. So I think in terms of timing, it, it all does come together very well. And so this would be, you know, to me, I consider this an action item to ensure that we do this as we move forward.
Okay, yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I guess that's, that would be my ask, is that, that we take a very close, serious look at that, to try to, to try to pull back where we can, and where those state requirements are serving the bill, let's stick with those.
Okay, so the item is the North Dakota Building Code Adoption. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is 7.6. It's a budget amendment for shop hoist capital equipment replacement. This is to replace a aging hoist in the shop. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Samuelson, second by Alderman Fuller. Sorry, Alderman Olson, it was a tie. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you, if I could. Brian, is, I, I guess I'm a little, I'm just a little perplexed on this item, because I, I remember a pretty good discussion last year about getting the mobile hoists all put together, and that was our answer, and we were going to have a great situation. And I'm seeing references here to, oh yeah, they're good, but they don't quite serve this, and now we need to go buy another hoist. So can you just talk about kind of the situation where we're at?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, you are right. We did ask for the mobile hoist early last year in a, in an effort to keep our team more flexible on the technician side. What we are looking for right now are hoists to go ahead and replace the current two-post fixed hoists, which are located in our light equipment mechanics bay. We only have one light technician. So essentially, what we're trying to do is create a safer environment for that individual, reduce the needs to go ahead and add additional technicians to support the, whatever activity, maintenance activity is going on for that piece of equipment we're working on. And also give them a little bit more versatility with a asymmetrical hoist system, which will allow them to pull in and out of the bay area, operate the hoist by themselves, which most times our other technicians are working other activities.
If I can continue?
Continue.
So Brian, did, was this contemplated in either 2025 or '26 in the budget list and just didn't make the cut? Or is this a new ask?
Alderman Blessam, in this case, this was a new ask. We originally were hoping to continue with a lot of the equipment as we're working through our inventory list with the fleet management plan itself. This was an item that we were monitoring. We thought we'd be able to give a little bit extra, a few years on it, extending the life. But it's starting to pose a little bit additional problems and risks to the technicians themselves, making things a little bit more complicated for their efforts.
Okay. Any further questions for the, for the course director? Seeing none, any discussion by the city council? Alderman Fuller?
No real discussion on this, but you know, I, I have kind of a issue. We're seeing a lot of budget amendments here at the end of the year. And, and to me, you know, I've been through enough budget processes in banks and everything else. This, this is, hey, we got extra money, so let's move it from this line item to this line item to make sure we spend it, so we get it next year. I know there's, there's needs, and equipment fails, and we got to do different things. But seeing our, our agenda at the end of the year lined with budget amendment after budget amendment is kind of disheartening.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to vote.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7.7 is the City of Minot Animal Pound Services Contract Agreement. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the recommendation. Discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, a couple months ago, I, I had somebody reach out to me. It was, oh, the Hairball Haven reached out to me and asked me some questions about our contract and everything we're doing. They, they were interested in possibly applying for parts or all of the, the contract. And so I, I went ahead and I pulled the contract, I pulled all the invoices, and I pulled all the reporting that the city gets from Service Valley Animal Shelter to kind of see. One of the things that struck me is we don't have a lot of measurables within our contract. It's very vague, and it's very open. We don't have, you know, monthly reporting requirements. We don't have, you know, items that we need to see, you know. Like, when we get a, when we get the invoice, it simply says, this many dog kennels, this many cat kennels, this many overage kennels. I'd like to know for the month if we paid for all the kennels, how many of them were empty, how many of them were long-term holds? How many of them were long-term holds that we couldn't fill, so we had to pay for the longer ones? The specific veterinary services, and I know some of those are on the bills. I want to know, you know, I have some other questions too. I mean, we've indemnified Service Valley Animal Shelter, but they haven't indemnified the city at all. Why will we not get an indemnification clause from them? You know, there's a number of things in there that just struck me as odd. And so while I have no issue with this, I would like to at least maybe sit down and look at the contract and put some more measurables in it. Because if we're spending fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars every month of the taxpayers' money, I think they would want to know where it's going specifically to and what they're getting for it. You know, one of the, one of the questions I have when I look at it, and somebody else had said this to me earlier, when an animal is euthanized, we pay for the cremation. I guess my question would be, that's their requirement, why do we have to pay for it? You know, I know there's a lot of different things and a lot of different answers, and I'm not saying we need to get into all of it. But that contract, I think, leaves the city a little bit vulnerable and I would like to see some more factual items added to it that we can get reporting on on a monthly basis.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. To kind of follow up what Alderman Fuller is saying, I have a few questions as well. And looking at the proposed contract, there are increases over a three-year period, but we don't know why the increases are there. The amount that we're paying now, is that covering the cost? Is it not covering the cost? So, you know, as, as our city staff negotiate this, I would, I would recommend that they try to get that information. An increase in the administrative costs, and it looked to me like it was just, again, a blanket increase by 20%. And the dollar amounts aren't that high, but the percentages are. And so I think that that's information that would be really important before we can agree on this contract. One other recommendation that I would make, it is pretty common practice for us as a city council when we are allowing funds to go to an organization that is run by a board, that we have representation on that board. And reading the memo, unless I misunderstood it, there are four-member board. I think having a person from the city council serving on the Service Valley Animal Shelter Board would also be beneficial.
Further discussion?
So I guess then, Mr. Mayor, Steph, what would be the appropriate thing to do here? Should we table this and give you guys time to work through some of the questions and the things we have? Or what would we need to do?
Alderman Fuller, members of the council. So I know time is kind of of the essence of this negotiation. So the current contract will expire at the end of December. Is that's correct, Deputy Chief Blessus?
Yeah, members of council, that's correct. It expires on January 1st.
Okay, so one means that we could move forward with this, is we could take it into an executive session. We could try to schedule something relatively soon to get the negotiating parameters from the council and then continue with the negotiation that way with Service Valley Animal Shelter. Do they have representation here tonight?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so there, there may be some questions that the council could pose to Service Valley that they could answer here tonight that might be able to alleviate some of those concerns and then help provide direction for a future executive session if we think that that's necessary.
City Attorney, is there a possibility of extending the contract, the existing contract for some short period of time? If we can't get this done in the next 29 days or whatever?
We could certainly look into that if Service Valley is amenable to it.
Thank you. Alderman Blessam.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, I guess, to the city attorney, what we've got before us is an authorization to negotiate, right? That's what, we're not, we're not agreeing to any terms in this memo. And so it feels to me like we can pass this item to authorize our negotiating team to continue. And as you suggested, if, if we need to be brought in to an executive session, we could certainly do that. But I, for me, it feels like to make sure we're able to move forward, we probably do want to pass this tonight and get this part done so they have the authorization. Is that your assessment?
Yes, Alderman Blessam, members of the council, that's correct. So what's, what's happened here is we've posted in our, a request for proposals out to the public to file responses with. And so we received an RFP response from Service Valley Animal Shelter. And so my understanding is that's the only response that we've received. So what's before the council tonight is authorization for staff to review and consider the terms that are presented in the RFP that's attached to the agenda by Service Valley Animal Shelter. And then if the council would like to reopen it, that's an option too. But if you want us to continue negotiations with Service Valley Animal Shelter, we just want to get that direction now so we know that we're proceeding in a, the direction the council would like us to.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steph, real quick, just having said that, I guess my question to you would be, if we change the parameters of the contract, wouldn't we need to put out a new RFP?
Alderman Fuller, I think that depends on how much change is going to be happening in the contract and if it's consistent with what was posted in the request for proposals. As long as it's not drastically changing from what was presented in the request for proposals that was posted to the public, like it's not substantively changing what a response would be that could garner additional responses to that RFP, then I think we would be okay to proceed with negotiations with Service Valley Animal Shelter.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue, one other question, since we're talking about the RFP, I did have two entities say, hey, we never knew that the RFP was out there. So I guess my question, and maybe Dale, you can help, when we post the RFP, how do we announce it so the community knows that we're looking for help or we're looking for somebody to take on a contract?
Mayor, Janser and Alderman Fuller, the RFP is posted in the public, the paper of public notice, so.
Minot Daily. So if you don't get to Minot Daily News, you may not be aware.
Correct, yep. And, and that is something that I've had a conversation with the city manager about. There, we could do better in terms of making sure it gets out there, but that is the way we proceed. That's the normal process that we have always followed.
Okay, all right. And I just, again, like, I didn't even know it was out there until I saw it on the agenda that we'd put it out for RFP. So I, I don't get to date into the Minot Daily newspaper, so I'm just asking. Thank you.
Alderman Olson.
One other item that I would like to be considered in the negotiations is the length of the contract. I believe that the proposed contract is three years. We are only one year into it and I feel a little uneasy agreeing to a three-year contract. I think I'd be more interested in maybe one or two years. But just if, if staff were willing to consider that during negotiations, I think that would be good as well.
Mr. Mayor.
City Manager.
If I could, to Alderman Olson's point, one thing I've asked the team to consider for all contracts is to start looking at things such as a base year plus two or three optional years. So this might be, you know, one that we could take that into consideration as well.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, City Manager, I know that in some, in many contracts, there's a mutual termination part with notice of X amount of time that either party can exercise. Something like that might work as well. Okay, so we have the motion to continue to negotiate with SVA.
Can I ask another question? Because when I read the alternatives down here, it doesn't say that we're negotiating. It says we could reject the proposal or we could accept the proposal. It doesn't say we're negotiating in that. So I just want to make sure that one requires certain areas of negotiation. I do see that now, okay. Under proposal two. Okay.
Alderman Sammison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the same concerns that Alderman Fuller has brought up just about, I guess, what we're paying for. And in order to figure out if we're paying for too many empty cages, it would be nice to know that exactly, you know, which ones we're paying for. And then I, I just looked at, or when I looked over this, there, there's some statistics in here on the animals and I just thought it was kind of surprising. I think it was on page 12. Anyway, it talks about the total animals and in 2022, there was 836 and 2025, so far there's 40855. There's a big difference there, but the point I was making with this, in 2022, they have a live release rate of 97.1, which is exactly what it comes out to be. In 2023, 2024 and 2025, if you add up the adoptions and the cat adoptions, the puppy adoptions and the ones that were returned, it doesn't come out to a 97% live release rate. And in 2025, it's, in 24, it's quite a bit different. So I just, you know, I didn't know how those numbers come about. And maybe I'm not looking at it right and I could be explained as, as to how that comes out, but that's all I had to say.
Alderman Fuller.
So the motion on the floor, is it to accept alternative one or alternative two?
No, it's, it's, Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify the motion, it's to, it's to accept the recommendation, which is, which is to accept the proposal but negotiate the contract. So essentially, it's selecting a vendor and proceeding to negotiation.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, everybody clear on that part? All right, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and cast our votes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson? Pittner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are moving on and items 7.8, 7.9 and 7.10 have been moved to, off of the agenda to a future agenda. And so that brings us to item 7.11, which is the sale of city property and office chair. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to approve and accept the offer.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fuller.
I guess I have a question maybe for Dave. So in 2023, we paid thirteen hundred dollars for this chair. I'm sure we depreciated it on a seven-year schedule, so we depreciated a hundred and eighty-five dollars a year, which means the chair is worth roughly nine hundred and thirty bucks, give or take. How come we're selling it for five?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, we don't depreciate the office equipment, but it was something that was purchased as an accommodation for this particular employee. It's a special chair. It's very small, so it's not suitable for most people. She left employment with the city and inquired if we would be interested in selling the chair. City ordinance requires council approval to divest ourselves of any asset more than a hundred dollars in value, so that is why we're here today. So there are a number of options outlined in the council agenda. You could arrive at a different counter with a different offer, whatever we think the value of a two-year-old used office chair is, or we could elect to retain ownership or dispose of it at auction or anything else. I just brought the item forward at, at their request.
Mr. Mayor, if I can continue?
Go ahead.
So do we not think that we'd ever be able to use this chair again in the future as a city? Like, I guess that's my question. We're going to buy a thirteen hundred dollar chair specifically for an employee and then they're going to leave the employee? Like, we, we couldn't use it in the future, put it in a closet and maybe?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, that is certainly an option as well to retain it in case we have someone else that is that similar size that requires that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you. Just some, just some discussion, I guess. I, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a, if there's a policy question here and if there's a lack of a policy that if, if maybe there ought to be. You know, as, as any equipment is going out of service, you know, we have a laptop going out of service. I assume that we maybe do more like lease. But it feels like there ought to be an employee kind of handbook policy around this more than a council decision. Like, I can understand why we have it because of the dollars, but that to me is a little more concerning that, that it feels very specific to this circumstance where it feels like it ought to be more than that. And, and we, you know, we, we had a gentleman here. I don't, I don't know if he, if he decided to stay, but that makes me wonder, is there, is there demand for the chair? You know, are, are we better off just, again, precedent-wise and all of that, to just put it in the auction? And the employee would have the opportunity to bid. She may get it for less than the 500 even. Is that, is that a more sound way of going about this? That's just my question.
City Attorney.
Mayor Alderman Blessam, just for the sake of discussion, so it's City Ordinance Section 2-4 that talks about sale of surplus personal property. That's the one that Dave referenced where if there's a value in excess of a hundred dollars and the property is no longer required for a public purpose, the same can be offered by sale by the city manager, but it has, if it's over a hundred dollars, it's sold with the consent and approval of the city council. So I think it's appropriate it came before the council because our ordinance asks for permission from the council in order to sell these items. But I will say when, when our office has been inquired about this in the past, we've always recommended to just put it on the public auction because it eliminates any concern about, are they getting a deal? Is there a gifting concern, anything like that? If it's offered for public sale, then it eliminates those issues. And so that's the recommendation that's historically come from us, is to put it out to auction. But this isn't an improper way to dispose of it either. This is, the request was made, an offer was made, so we bring it to the council to review, consider. You can approve it, decline, counter, offer, direct it to go to auction, whatever the council is looking for here.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you. I don't, I don't see huge stakes in this, obviously. So my, my vote will be no, just to be clear, only because I do think alternative three probably makes more sense, so.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Blessam?
No.
Fuller?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Sammison?
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Alderman Blessam.
I'd like to move option three, which is to put it in the upcoming online auction.
Second.
Moving seconded for option three to put it in the auction. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson? Pittner? Sammison?
No.
Motion carries with the dissent from Sammison.
That takes us to item 7.12, Gaming Site Authorization Amendment. This is for the Buell Convention and Visitors Bureau at Uncle Mattio's. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, apparently we're ready to vote. Please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item is personal appearances. The way that that works is those who wish to speak need to fill out a speaker's card and get it to the city clerk and she is checking for them now. Our first speaker will be Aaron Moss from the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Seven.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Aaron Moss. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the North Dakota Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Seven here in Minot. Just wanted to give sort of an annual update that we've been doing the past several years to advise the council that just yesterday, we participated in our ninth annual Stuff a Squad Toy Drive here in Minot. And we're pleased to report that four squad cars were filled with toys, which were, and we also received a one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars in cash donation. and we also received one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars in cash donations from the very generous public that were shopping that yesterday at Walmart. And we divided the proceeds amongst the Salvation Army Community Action Partnership, Minot Area Homeless Coalition, the Domestic Violence Crisis Center. And as a law enforcement representation organization, we wanted to very specifically reach out and share our gratitude with Chief Frye for allowing the use of department vehicles and as well as the uniform to be worn by the Minot Police Department members that were participating in the day. We were also joined by deputies from the Ward County Sheriff's Office as well as numerous cadets from our Minot Law Enforcement Cadet Unit here, that's primarily administered by the Minot Police Department. So again, we wanted to say thank you to the public as well as Chief Frye and as well as Deputy Chief Plessis, who also provided a donation and Chief Frye took the time to donate money to donate as well, some toys to the cause. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
I see no questions. Thank you and your colleagues for your good work, especially at this time of year with, you know, people in need. It's a good cause.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, our next speaker is Billy Gunderson.
Mayor Janser, council members. November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, KX News had coverage on City of Minot officials' outline plan to address its aging bus fleet. Transit Superintendent Brian Harinka stated that the buses are safe and always sure they are operable. He stated they found a vendor in California that refurbishes buses. This was November twenty twenty-five. April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at the Roundtable on Issues Impacting Disabled Communities, I addressed the buses not being safe, not operating safely. Alderwoman Evans said that the buses are from California, that they do not operate well in the winter. I asked why we're buying buses from California, that that's like having someone from Texas design anything to be built in North Dakota and expect it work. She said that the buses are expensive. I continued. She cut me off abruptly and said, you buy them then. She spoke over me, disinterested to hear anything else that I had to say. The clip on KX News shows one of the three types of buses, one with the less steep ramp, a style that should not require a sidewalk. In the clip, the bus is using a sidewalk, making it appear almost level to be safe. Because the city transit station is on a hill and slope to the side, it's unsafe, requires assistance getting on and off in a wheelchair for all of the buses, except the bus style that does not work on a hill. I was stuck on the platform during the winter, the temperatures in the single digits, open to the west wind, waiting for a mechanic to arrive to help. The third bus style with a steep ramp requires a sidewalk to enter and exit safely. A sidewalk is not available at the transit station because of the planters keeping the buses away from the sidewalk, requiring assistance keeping a wheelchair user from being independent. An egregious safety concern when one of the bus drivers wears stiletto heels to work, depending on her not slipping as she assists me down the steeps, the steep ramp. Or when the bus drivers cannot see in front of them to make sure I'm completely on the ramp or see that my foot is caught as I cannot feel below my arms as they continue to push. Depending where the bus is, my wheelchair bottoms out at the end of the ramp, causing me to fall forward as I am paralyzed with no muscle control below my arms. It would be safest to be able to enter and exit the bus independently without requiring assistance. Before the transit station moved, it required that riders be able to enter and exit the bus independently. The bus transit was at the auditorium with a sidewalk for wheelchair users to enter and exit safely. The KX News article addressed buses with malfunctioning lifts would not be put into service, leading to operational delays and potential disruptions for passengers. Because these buses were put into service, there were operational delays and disruptions for passengers, including me being told by the bus driver to wait for the next bus, concerned the ramp would not work, having to wait in the cold, seventeen degrees outside, windy. The next bus passing by me because they were not paying attention and did not hear over the radio to know, to watch for me because I could not be picked up, I missed my appointment. Buses are sent out with ADA ramps not working, buses not kneeling, ADA straps not working, wheelchair users dropped in unsafe. On November twenty-first, I saw Alderman Mike Blessam using the buses. Thank you for investing to know. That day, a bus had no heat, a bus rolled through stop signs not to stall. That same bus the day before stalled going up Eighth Street. That week, a bus stopped working. It would not kneel, the ramp would not work, turned off, it still had power. The battery disconnected, it still had power. A bus's door that day, on November twenty-first, a bus's door kept opening and closing while driving. A bus had a radio that did not work for the driver to be heard. The buses not working puts a burden on the bus drivers, causing stress when driving can already be stressful and keeps no one safe. If there were no buses running because they are not safe, it would be obvious to the public that there is a real concern. This is what should happen. There is a real concern. The public should be aware, and not just that they require extra maintenance because they are beyond miles and years. When city officials addressed that the buses are safe, I questioned what the expectation of safe is, safe for who? Or if it's that safe enough is safe, not being safe at all. Public officials recognized ridership went up as they were working, seeking out federal funds rather than using city funds for a service they wanted to remove because they felt there were not enough riders. The KX News.
You're minute over the time.
I'm sorry, may I have thirty seconds, please?
Yes.
Thank you. The KX News coverage on City of Minot officials' outline plan to address its aging bus fleet, in my opinion, is the intention to control a narrative. It is a cruel illusion of what those that depend on the city transit experience. Thank you.
That concludes public appearances. We will move on to miscellaneous and discussion items. I'm sorry, City Attorney.
Mayor Janser, members of the council, I'd received a text message from our Public Information Officer Jennifer Clean. She's in the booth to the side of the dais here, and she's offered to do a demonstration on where to locate the bid postings on the city website. She's scrolling down to the very bottom of the page now, and you'll see a quick links portion. Second from the bottom states explore bid postings. And from there, you can sign up to receive a text message or an email when new bids are added. You can also sort them by showing closed, awarded, canceled bids, open bids, and categories.
Thank you very much, that's helpful information. Hopefully, we'll get some additional bidders based on that. We move on now to Section Nine, which is miscellaneous and discussion items. We have one item, which is the Economic Development Plan Review Committee. However, as was noted in the write-up for this item, it was postponed from a previous time when we only had six members and we were waiting for a seventh member to deal with this item. So again, tonight, we find ourselves with our seventh member unable to be present. And so I guess, what are your wishes? Alderman Blessam.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to direct staff to move this to the January fifth meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion a second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Sammison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item number ten.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.